The Council is not allowed to respond, so all your questions will essentially be rhetorical. But we are available afterwards, of course, to have direct questions delivered to us when the meeting's over or any time after. Our contact information is available at the city website. Sometimes folks haven't timed out their presentations quite well and sometimes run over three minutes. I will allow it if you're wrapping up. And by wrapping up doesn't mean moving on to the third or fourth paragraph after that. I mean just finish your sentence or finish your thought. If you proceed past that point, and essentially filibuster, I will ask you to stop. If you refuse to stop, then we will recess, and we will not convene again until you quit the chambers.[64.01][64.01](Laughter). So with that notification, we will start with Paul Voss.
Can we switch the order?
You can. Whatever. Okay. And when you come up, speak, give us your name and address. Oh, I saw the switch there. It was okay. Jeff Napolitano is first.
Thanks. I'm Jeff Napolitano, 266 Grove Street. I'm here to speak on the resolution regarding drone aircraft on the agenda. I understand that it might appear to be a remote issue, no pun intended, and there might be the perception that it isn't under the purview of municipalities such as Northampton, but that is certainly not the case for several reasons. First, in the most basic sense, what you say has meaning and impact. You represent the voices of the people of Northampton, and our voices are important. As an organizer, I am reminded on a regular basis that change, at least good change, does not trickle down from the top. It starts from below in meetings like this of people of goodwill. Second, we need to distinguish between militarized drones and the scientific drones that Professor Voss will be speaking on in just a moment. Militarized drones are continuing to be used to spy upon and bomb people, many innocent people, in other countries. And if our federal government won't stop using them, at least we, at a grassroots level, have an obligation to decry their use. Third, drones are here. As with so many other policies and technology, the use of militarized drones began abroad with marginalized people, people we're not supposed to care about. But it has gotten incrementally closer to you and me. First, Afghanistan, Iraq, and Yemen. Then, five years ago, the border between U.S. and Mexico. Now, they are being flown in our skies in secret by the federal government. In fact, one week ago, Director of the FBI, Miller, revealed for the very first time to a surprised Congress that the FBI has and continues to use drones for surveillance without actually having any guidelines to protect our civil liberties and safety. We have been forbidden from knowing more details, but such drones are here, and they have been used on the citizenry of the United States. So I hope that alarms and concerns you as much as it did members of Congress. Fourth and finally, militarized drones are a product in an industry. Like so many other industries funded by the Department of Defense, it has momentum and a life of its own. The military is full up of drones because in the last decade they bought so many, they're now slowing their purchases. That means that military contractors have a supply that they need to get rid of, and they've now turned to creating an aggressive domestic market selling them to local law enforcement agencies. Whether we like it or not, literally the air around us is being changed in order to accommodate the types of drones that conduct surveillance, and yes, the ones that are armed. Professor Voss is going to talk precisely about how these changes are already concretely and adversely affecting us in this city and across the country. This is not an abstract theoretical problem. The market for militarized drones is a very real market, and military contractors have a very real influence on our world and in Congress. What the resolution in front of you lays out is a mechanism for you, the representatives of the people of Northampton, to officially and formally weigh in on that reality. On another quick note, I wish to thank you for approving the resolution regarding Guantanamo Bay prisoners last week. Pocky Whelan, who spoke here a week ago, was actually arrested yesterday in D.C. in an action to remind the powers that be of their moral duty, what you do as an effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow.[269.22][269.22](Applause). Let Mr. Napolitano serve as an excellent example. Paul Voss.
That's a tough act to follow. Do you want to finish?
Yes, sure.
When I do the Cosby.
Okay. And when you step up, please identify yourself and give us your address.
Yes, so my name is Paul Voss, and I'm a resident of Northampton, 89 Ridgewood Terrace, and I teach at Smith College in the engineering program. So I'm here also to support the resolution on drones. Specifically, I do research with this technology. I fly little things all over the world, including the smallest altitude-controlled balloons that are made anywhere, and we fly them in Antarctica and all kinds of places to get climate data. Recently, it's been impossible to do work here. We're facing so many federal restrictions on putting anything in the air outdoor, including things that would be toy things that you would buy at, you know, a toy store. If you put a sensor on it, use it to teach the students engineering, anything else, it becomes an aircraft under FAA purview. It needs airworthiness certifications. And in fact, these certificates of authorization, they're called, or COAs, are not even available to private institutions at this point. So only public institutions and government agencies can fly anything, unless you're doing it for fun or for hobby. So this is how the FAA distinguishes things. So you can imagine this has a big impact on our program. We've actually canceled a course in aerial vehicle design in our engineering program. I've sent students home not to do research in the summer because we can't touch the air unless we want to work indoors. And I do atmospheric science, so that's not such an interesting place to study. So I spent a lot of time studying the airspace and said, can they do this? And the answer is probably not. And I think this is where you guys come in. I'll give you a brief 30-second history, or maybe more. When the airspace started out, we, hundreds of years ago, common law said we owned the airspace ad coilam to the heavens. Property, landowners owned the air above their property. That obviously became in conflict with the first aircraft flights, and it was actually someone sitting in your seats, who became President Calvin Coolidge, was the one who signed into law the Air Commerce Act of 1926, which established the federal airspace and turned what is the upper air into a federal highway, a public highway, for aircraft, and left the airspace near the ground in the hands of property owners and local control. So now we step forward about 80 years or so, and we have a situation where the FAA is now writing a lot of regulations and starting to tell us a lot of things that we can and can't do in our backyards one inch above the grass. And so what that means is that they internally are considering this to be navigable airspace, that public highway all the way down to the grass in our backyards. And there's lots of evidence for that. They won't say it outright, but you can put all the pieces together, and it's pretty clear what's happening, that they, there's these low-flying aircraft now, there's a huge market for it. The drone industry is salivating over all our backyards. They want to put stuff out there. They want to be able to freely fly, sell to police departments across the country, have uniform set of rules everywhere. They don't want property owners telling them what, or local communities, what they can and can't do. So this is where our resolution comes in. We take control of the lowermost airspace and affirm what the Supreme Court has said. And I think that could not be more beautifully said than a paragraph quoted directly from the Maine Supreme Court case in 1946 that talks about airspace. So on that note, I'll leave it to you guys to think about this.
Thank you. There you go. The last paragraph is in a frame here on our desk. Thank you. That's, it's... Next, Nathaniel Fortune, please.
Thank you. I too promise not to drone on.[495.74][495.74](Laughter).
Snap. All right.
I'm Nathaniel Fortune, 152 Westbrook Road in Waitley. The reason I'm here in Northampton is twofold. First, I'm a professor of physics here at Smith College. And two, in 2010, your voters gave me the honor of giving me 14 percent of the vote in my Kansas City First State Audit Green Rainbow Party. And in both my professional and political capacities, I'm here to ask the Council to support this resolution on drone aircraft. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wow, okay. Joyce Palmer, Fortune.
Hi, I'm Joyce Palmer, Fortune. I also live at 152 Westbrook Road in Waitley. I'm a member of the Select Board of Waitley, but I'm here because I teach up the street. I teach physics, too, at Smith College, and I'm the co-chair of the local Pioneer Valley Green Rainbow Party. I just came to support this resolution and everything that Paul said and everything that was said before. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Rick Purcell, please.
Rick Purcell, 99 Martin Street, Holyoke, Massachusetts. I'm also a member of the Green Rainbow Party, and I'm aggressively asking Alex Morris and our city council in Holyoke to support this resolution as well. And your great leadership will show how it's done, so I'll take it back to Holyoke, whatever you decide to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, is this Darlene Ellis?
My name is Darlene Elias, and I live in the city of Holyoke. And I'm here in different capacities. I'm an associate of the Green Rainbow Party. I'm a community organizer. I'm also in law enforcement. I won't tell you what I do. But the reality of the matter is, you know, besides the fact that the use of these drones is a really violation of human rights, as a resident, you know, as an individual, I really value my privacy. And just to think, if we approve this kind of surveillance, you know, kind of carte blanche, without questioning that, I can't imagine what it's going to lead to. And to me, my privacy is really important, and I just truly encourage you to do whatever you can to adopt this resolution and to set a precedent for other communities and cities and towns. Take the lead so that they can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Charles O'Neil, please.
My name is Charles O'Neil. I live at 2 Pomeroy Terrace. Going to bring us back down to earth and talk about vibrant sidewalks instead of drones. I'm concerned about the resolution about vibrant sidewalks because I think it's flawed and unnecessarily vague, and I wanted to make three points about that. First, under the category of survival, I think this resolution supports, basically it looks like the Council is supporting the notion that people should live on sidewalks. I think we shouldn't encourage people to live on sidewalks. I think it's dangerous, it's unhealthy, it's unsanitary. And if really that's the purpose of this, then we really should not be building more benches, but we should be building tent platforms and outhouses instead. And the second thing is, is I think that the resolution also seems to encourage behavior and disruptive behavior out of the social norm. And I don't think that where, as we might have to condone that or condone that sometimes, I don't think the Council should be encouraging behavior outside the social norm. As I read this resolution, it would be seen that we would encourage people to walk down Main Street naked shouting obscenities. So I mean, I think that this needs to be more carefully worded. And the third thing is, is that something that's really missing in this resolution is any mention of merchants. You can have all the sidewalks, you can make them as wide as you want, you can have everything you want. If there's no merchants downtown, there's no vibrant sidewalks. There's nothing in here to mention merchants. A major function of sidewalks is to allow people to go to shops, go to restaurants, and do those activities. And I think that clearly the merchants are an important part of vibrant sidewalks. They're completely left out of this resolution. In fact, I think the resolution does this the opposite. It actually discourages merchants from being here. If I was a merchant and I saw this resolution, I'm not sure I'd renew my lease, in the sense that it seems to favor people sleeping on sidewalks, living on the sidewalks, and disruptive behavior out of the social norm. I mean, conveniently, when it talks about carrying out ordinary activities of daily life, in parentheses, it mentions eating and sleeping, but it conveniently leaves out some of the other activities of daily life, such as urinating, defecating, dressing and undressing. And I don't really think we want that to be occurring on the sidewalks in Northampton. So I strongly urge the Council to reconsider the language of this resolution. I think everyone in this room is for vibrant sidewalks, but I think that we need to rethink how to get there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What was his name?
That's Charles O'Neil. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
O'Neil. Aaron Cantrell, please.
Hi there. I'm Aaron Cantrell of 45 Fort Hill Terrace, and I'm here to support the drone resolution as well. I'm kind of coming at it from a little bit of a different perspective. I'm a recent Hampshire alum and co-founded a small product design and mechanical design company in the area here. And basically, we've talked a lot about militarized drones already, and I wanted to touch a little bit more on civilian and agricultural uses and the multitude of uses which are, you know, beneficial to society and not encroaching on our personal freedom and our personal privacy. And so the introduced, proposed regulation by the FAA and on a more national scale, basically, as it is outlined, it pushes out smaller players in the field, not only in terms of research institutions or small private schools such as Smith or any of the other five colleges in the area, for small companies that are trying to develop technologies that could help for agricultural uses and basically make, you know, our daily lives easier in many ways and also help what we do. It's pushing them out because the certification process is prohibitive for small academic institutions, small companies, and basically, the whole process, the cost of it, and it's moving in the direction of supporting only Department of Defense-type applications of this technology. And so it's also, in doing that, we are no longer able to conduct research and develop products around this, and it's essentially making it so that overseas, in many other countries, they become the larger players of this new kind of revolutionary technology that will have profound effects on our future here. And so I support the resolution and want to say I urge you guys to vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Susko, please.
Could I suggest delaying mine to the end and get what the issue?
You are the last name on the list.
Yes, Susko, Steve Susko, 754 Bridge Road, S-U-S-C-O. So a win's a win, right? I was grocery shopping following your win on override day. I ran into one of your operatives proudly and merrily exclaiming, "We won, we won, we beat you." Ha ha, and ya. I tried to turn the conversation to something more intelligent than chest bumping and high-fiving, but to no avail. We won, we won. I wondered if the us mentioned in your sham flyer also won, or was it just we? Next morning, my neighbor called me. Such a story here, the husband in his mid-90s-plus, still spry, still driving, still contributing. His spouse sadly, early 90s, advanced Alzheimer's, but they are still in there punching, taking care of their business, no burden to the city or government, but barely living on a 30-year-old pension and not, not making ends meet, but as always, paying their taxes on time and in full. My neighbor asked me, "What do we do now, Steve, now that they've passed their override? Where will we find the money? Prescriptions are climbing to $1,200 hours a month." You here have said, "Well, it's unfortunate, but it's imperative we maintain our status quo, and unfortunately, they aren't a special population as in your sham flyer, and nothing can be done, and oh, well, riding roughshod on the elderly and vulnerable, shame on you or we or us. Shame on the 9,000-plus of us too important or too busy or too whatever to participate and vote. Shame on our news media, shirkers of their duty, not an independent questioning gear in your printing press, I suppose." Yes, signs at publicly subsidized housing, renters encouraged to vote yes without the pain of paying, filling already unfilled positions, not layoffs, establishing slush funds. If I had a dollar for everyone I encountered voting uninformed yes and then changing to no upon becoming informed, quote, "Oh, I don't want that," unquote, I'd pay my new tax burden and my neighbors and have some left for a run-up to Scotty's. So a win's a win, right? No. A win based on a sham isn't a win, it's a sham.
Thank you very much. And now, anyone who hasn't signed up who would like to speak? Okay, then I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Here.
Present.
Here. Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Here. Counselor Murphy is away with an excuse. We will open with communications from the mayor. No communications? Okay. So first up, we're going, the resolution to support vibrant sidewalks. Is it the preference that we pass reading, or you want me to read this aloud?
I think it's appropriate to read it.
To read it? Okay. So resolution to support vibrant sidewalks. Whereas urban planning professors, and you're going to have to help me with this name again, Anastasia Lotcado Cederas and Renia Aaron Fust identify five essential purposes of sidewalks in their compelling article, Vibrant Sidewalks in the United States. And whereas these essential purposes can be described as follows. Movement. Sidewalks are how pedestrians move from one place to another.
Elements, I think. Elements, isn't it? Or purposes? Essential elements?
It says essential purposes on the copy I have here. Encounter. Sidewalks are places where you meet people, people you know, people you don't know, and people you might not want to know. And sometimes this purpose of the sidewalk trumps the movement purpose, as in when a street fair temporarily closes a pathway to normal traffic. Sidewalks are where, quote, "spontaneous and planned festivities break the rhythm of everyday life and give the collective expression to people's joy, sorrow, or aspirations," close quote. Confrontation. Not every activity that takes place on a sidewalk is comfortable. Rallies and protests, sit-ins, or even talking loudly might be disruptive or violate social norms. Still, these activities should be accommodated on democratic sidewalks. Survival. For some people, the sidewalk is home, the only place where they can carry out the ordinary activities of daily life, eating and sleeping. The rest of us more commonly do indoors. Sidewalks are also often controversially the places where some people like panhandlers, street vendors, or day laborers go to earn a living. Beauty. Sidewalks can be a place of lush beauty with trees, plants, street furniture, art, and other items that give the sidewalk and the community it serves its own identity. And whereas a 2011 Nelson Nygaard-designed charrette focused on downtown Northampton called for sidewalks markedly widened and Main Street narrowed to shorten the crosswalks, increasing safety, increase public space for foot traffic in front of local businesses, and provide an opportunity for more benches. And whereas in 2005, a study entitled "Northampton Streetscape Improvement Plan: Main Street and Pleasant Street" was prepared by Denick Design Associates, and it called for, in addition to improving and widening the sidewalks, increased seating along Main Street and Pleasant Street. And whereas people are more likely to walk in areas that host a diversity of uses, and whereas street furniture allows for a city to be more of a community, an area to gather, share, and experience life together, and whereas benches provide pedestrians with an opportunity to sit, rest, wait for a bus where there isn't adequate bus shelter space, meet a friend, or read the paper. And now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton City Council envisions sidewalks as spaces that can accommodate both enjoyable and disruptive activities, encourages a strategic review of both the Nelson Nygaard study and the Northampton Streetscape Improvement Plan, and calls for sidewalk improvements and expanded street furniture along the entire length of Main Street. I'll accept a motion, put it on the floor. Some moves. Is there a second?
A second.
A second. Counselor Schwartz?
So I voted for this last time, and I certainly am very much in supportive spirit, but I, the spirit of, the spirit of the resolution, I'm in support of it. At the same time, I've heard from a couple of people, and so I've, the job of sort of communication has had its effect, and I've stared closer and harder and longer, which is a good thing, and I appreciate the feedback. And I think that this language may be unnecessarily provocative for our mission. I think that we know what we mean by disruptive activities, but I think that, I think that for a quick read, it's unnecessarily stirring in a way that I think we could adjust. And I think that even in the, in the quoting of these essential purposes in the top of the resolution, again, I think it's fantastic for an intellectual discussion and reflection. I think for messaging, it's more complicated. I mean, I think we would all agree we're striving to not have people need to survive on the streets, right? But that's more of a, I think there's more discussion in that. And I think to just present it in a paragraph, it's just, it's raising, it's creating opportunities for confusion and discussion that we can't do in a single printed page, we can't meet in a single printed page. So I'd like to consider an adjustment of the language, and I don't have a direct amendment yet, but I could come up with one if, you know, if we go further.
Counselor LaBarge, Counselor Carney, and Counselor Tacey.
Thank you. I have great concerns. I've talked with Counselor Carney this week. I received a call from Judith Fine, had a lengthy talk with her, and apparently there are some other business owners who do have concerns with the language that Counselor Schwartz had just brought forth. And what I'd like to see happen is that we open it up and have a public hearing before we vote on this with the business owners here in the city of Northampton and let them come forth, and let's talk about it. Where is the problem here that the business owners are having, and see if we can change some language.
Counselor Carney.
Thank you. I'm really glad that we've heard at least from one citizen who came to speak on this resolution. Again, this was on the agenda June 4th or June 6th, and that was right at the heels of, you know, what was a very public and highly contested controversy downtown. And just to give a little bit of context, for those, I agree with Counselor Schwartz. Certainly, not even looking at the resolution, but anyone reading the newspaper article would think that this was a resolution by the city council to encourage disruptive behavior. And, you know, frankly, that's not at all what was intended when I was drafting this. In fact, it was more, this was a response, this was intended to be a response to a specific situation that then was resolved by returning the benches. Our question then was, do we move forward with our ordinance that we had, which was to mandate a specific number of benches, the ordinance that Counselor Adams drew up? And that seemed, you know, moot at that point because benches were back. But the resolution that was drafted, which again, didn't seem appropriate to resolve that we return benches in the city of Northampton, was really more of a way to start, and it's hard to say start a conversation, the conversation had already really been started by removal of benches, but to lay a context whereby we could say, this is what is, and this is what is. So those elements that are described above are probably what people wouldn't argue is not present on our sidewalks and streets downtown. So really, it was just saying, this is what is, this is what we see, and this is what some people who are, do a lot of research on sidewalks and downtowns in the area of planning, describe as vibrant. They look at these things, and this is what they describe. And so I looked at those, and it said, what we have in Northampton is certainly vibrant. And it acknowledges, it acknowledges that there is discomfort, there is a clash. I'm not attached to the language here especially. I see, I saw it as a way of stating what is, what we see downtown in Northampton, and of then offering what has been a response, what has been discussed at a number of levels, at subcommittee levels, at transportation and parking, at others where we've actually invested in some studies downtown. We had the Nelson Nygaard study and others that really talked about increasing the public space. So it's really about having a conversation about how we use our downtown space, how we use public space. And that was really more of the intent. Clearly, clearly, some of the wording, that was not my wording, in fact, again, as you said, it's quoted from an article of what, of how vibrancy can be described. Clearly, that irked a number of people. And, you know, it's interesting to me, and again, I'm not completely attached to that, but I found it really helpful. So again, I also agree that it's inadequate to have one member of the public come and speak to us if the whole purpose was to have a broad conversation. It's also inappropriate for us to take, to decide on a second reading. speak to us if the whole purpose was to have a broad conversation. It's also inappropriate for us to take, to decide on a second reading one week after the first reading, especially on a topic that's been bubbling for decades, as, as somebody said to me when they, when they asked, what's the rush? So my, because, you know, I'm not, I'm not invested in having something railroaded through, but really, I think that's more appropriate to be, have a broad public conversation, one that invites all the people who are interested in this topic, and clearly, there are so many with many different opinions about how we use public space. So I would agree that before we resolve what's written in here, we consider having a wide public forum, not immediately, but rather, as was suggested by some business owners downtown in the fall, after they've finished a lot of the busy sidewalk sales and other events, this can be a really busy time, and give people an opportunity to come and speak and really talk about how we see our public space and, you know, where we can go from there. So I would support having a public forum, having one that's really as large as it can be, and hears from as many interested parties as can speak to this matter. I would hope that Mr. O'Neal would come, and that those shop owners, and anyone, people who stood out and had protests, you know, a month ago. So that's my thought on the matter. I think the folks can speak to that.
Counselor Tacey, and then Counselor Specter.
I don't think I've ever had so many calls over a resolution. Business owners, residents, so, and it's all, what is the rush? What is this? And, and then some other colorful language from, from some on a resolution. And so I got online, and I can't say the name. You wanna say it again, give it another shot?
Which one? The, of the, the two women who conducted the study?
Yes. Well, I, I got online, and I tried to figure out just exactly, what have they done, and where has this been implemented? I really couldn't find anything. And they're just, this was just their input or their, their report. And I don't, I couldn't find the basis, or where this has been tried, or to just find something? I'm asking, I couldn't find it.
A due reference.
If it's to me, then I'll say, again, this was a paper that was not, it was, it really looked at the history of how sidewalks have changed in the last few hundred years, that they used to, they used to really be wide public spaces. People would go out and stand on soapboxes, you know, and have, there are all sorts of activities that happened on sidewalks, and that with the, with the development of the car, the automobile, and highways, the whole notion of sidewalks really kind of moved more towards how to, how to make it easy for people to move from here to there. And so what the, the upshot of their piece is that those places that have vibrancy are areas where, and, and that's why I said, I looked, and I said, wow, what they're describing here is, is pretty much what we have in Northampton. Not saying what we should have, what we encourage, what we condone, but what is. We have all of those things that happen. We have rallies and protests and street fairs, and panhandlers and loiterers, and all sorts of things. So it was more like saying, this is, this is an example. They're talking about a particular type of sidewalk, and Northampton happens to look like what they're describing. And so it just says, this is what is, and clearly, there's discomfort.
So, so we already have all of this?
Oh, this isn't about encouraging anything, except, if you look, except a look at those studies that, in my opinion, when we, and when we talked about those, created more space for people, created more breathing room, so that those constituents that typically bump against each other are less likely to do so. But, you know, I agree that there's something about describing what is, as is described in this article, and, and then taking that as its entry point, that clearly provoked many people, many people felt provoked, as Counselor Schwartz said. That's not the intention here, and so, and again, I'm not completely attached to that language. What I'm attached to is the idea that we actually have a forum, rather than say, rather than say, this is something that we need to have a conversation about. What we need to do is set up a space, a means, a process whereby people can come and speak, rather than just exchanging emails, or phone calls, or Facebook entries, but a moderated forum.
Counselor Specter.
I think Counselor Tacey still has.
Yeah, I would actually, I would encourage a public hearing on this. This is a broader conversation.
Counselor Specter.
So this topic already, Counselor Freeman Daniels mentioned this last week. At EDLU, we already talked about this, and having a, a public conversation, we don't necessarily have to be the committee that sponsors that. We have begun that discussion. We've actually asked for the city economic development person, and for Peg Keller with Housing and Homeless, to bring us the data they have, so that we have some data there. We were talking about a large public forum, but it may be more appropriate to do this as a city council-sponsored event. One of the things we may want to do, and again, I'm gonna steal this now from Counselor Freeman Daniels, he suggested we refer this to EDLU, because this is an economic development issue. It is something we have been discussing, we might be able to work on the language. It also then would provide an opportunity and a framework for a large public discussion. This does, and I want to applaud you, it does bring up a lot of really good topics, and allows us to have that conversation. So, just wanted you to know, we were already planning on doing that, as we talked about last time. We do not need to do that and move ahead and be the ones who sponsor that. I'm perfectly happy if the council president wants to set this up as a, it may, may be more appropriate to have this be a council-sponsored public forum, but...
Well, if you allow me, it was directed, and actually also is one of the sponsors, and I, I think that would be appropriate, I think it'd be more appropriate than, say, EDLU, because that actually confers a certain status to a cer, one portion of the stakeholders, as it's already been discussed. Counselor Freeman Daniels?
I don't want to interrupt you, but...
No, no, fine, go ahead.
I'd like to move to refer this to EDLU.
There's a motion made and seconded to move this to EDLU. Now on that point.
Yeah, I, I understand the, that the first word of the committee is economic, but...
And development.
Economic, yes. But the, the last two are land use, which is the, has the broad claim of, of what happens on sidewalks and on the public, in the public space, as well as the private space. I think that much of what has been discussed here prior, from Counselor LaBarge and Counselor Carney, have, is actually mostly what, a repetition of what we spoke about at EDLU last month, and, or actually earlier this month, I guess. So I do think that, and we spoke about a forum, and we spoke about how to structure it, and what, and what we need to prepare, what we need to have to prepare for such an event. I think that we're well, we're well on our way. It won't be, it's not gonna happen next month, it's not gonna happen immediately. So I, and of course, with any council committee, you know, all the, all members of the council are encouraged to, to attend and to be, to, and they have a seat at the table. So I would recommend that this come out of the EDLU committee.
Counselor Ryan.
I have a preference for the, suggesting of the council president. I mean, why, why should stakeholders present to four members of the council? If we can have a public forum, they can present to the entire council, and also, EDLU's already discussed it. I think the appropriate next step would be to have a, a public forum with the full council. Thank you.
If, if I could add, I mean, one of, one of the virtues of a resolution, arguably one of its strengths, is the fact that it promotes and provokes conversation, discussion, and education on issues. I mean, that's, it's why we bring them. I mean, there are times that we do perfunctory ones, recting, recognizing that everyone holds cancer and contempt, and that's not necessarily expanding this world's edification on that. But then on some of the issues, one, all the other resolutions that we have today are actually in the hopes of provoking a conversation, and, and getting in some sense, promoting the sense of what the community also feels. And the fact, what, what inspired this, actually, Counselor Carney and I had a number of conversations, and part of our mutual frustration was, this does happen commonly, it comes up frequently, and unfortunately, the conversation dies when the weather starts getting colder. The discussion there is, is left to the more extreme points that played out on social media when the benches were removed. But at the same time, arguably, the issues weren't addressed, just a lot of people feeling poorly at the end of it. And I think that this resolution, to that extent, has been successful, and if, and if it serves as an invitation for the community to get together, and in the fall, to come and expand, and continue the conversation past the, the summer days, then I think that's all to the good, and I think in that respect, this resolution will, will be a success. Counselor Tacey?
Yeah, 'cause if we voted on it right now, I, I wouldn't support it. And I would much rather a council-sponsored forum than sending this off to a particular committee.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, I would like to echo what our council-at-large, Jesse Adams, had recommended. I would like it to come to full city council for a forum.
All right, so is there any more discussion on the motion to refer to EDLU?
I'm not opposed to the committee, the EDLU committee, taking this up and talking about it in their, in their committee. What I would like to see, though, is a type of forum that would include not only all members of the council, but the mayor's office, the mayor himself, people who've already expressed, you know, their opinions. And again, this, we're talking about something that would need, would require considerable space and moderation, it would seem, because there's very heated, there are very heated ideas about this topic.
Which one of you decided?
Me.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
I just want to say, I can't speak for the chair, but I'm, I'm not interested in sitting in EDLU and planning out a forum, and, which we have talked about, and we understand that it's going to take some preparation. I'm not interested in doing that and then having it done for the, and, and not having the, the committee sponsor it. So, I, I don't know who on the council is going to, going to actually prepare and plan for the forum. I'm suggesting that EDLU does it. If someone on the, on the council wants to do it instead, that's fine, but I'm, I'm not interested in working at the committee level and then having the council sponsor it, sorry.
Counselor Specter.
I was actually gonna say a similar thing, but slightly differently, is that we have started the work on this, but I, I would just like to know if, if this group, and how we set that up, if we're gonna do a council-sponsored forum. I'm happy to help with that setting up, you can chair that.
Notice your hesitation, but yes.
No, but because I'm only hesitant, I, I agree that even today, I did a little more work on our discussion about how EDLU is gonna do this, and we just need to be instructed. If we're not going to be moving forward with this tonight, my, my comfort level would be if we absolutely know that the council is gonna sponsor this. I would imagine in the fall, in September, 'cause that's probably the earliest time that we can get a good, fine, and I'd be happy to work with the council president on the kind of ideas that we came up with. But I just want to feel comfortable that we're actually gonna do this, and it sounds like there's the interest to do it. Now we actually have to say, okay, how are we gonna move forward on doing this? Because we've already had that discussion, and I just want to make sure, I think that's what you're saying too, that we're actually gonna, you're saying a little different.
Well, I think we're all speaking to the same issue with the same objective, and the difference being somewhat subtle, but maybe more an issue of perception, so...
Would it be possible for you and I, and if you would like to be at that need, that we could meet and discuss this and bring it forward at the next council meeting that has some specifics attached to it?
Yes, I'd be fine.
So we can discuss what we've already...
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
No.
Or you can just refer to EDLU.
Yes.
Refer to EDLU and have EDLU...
We could...
Well, I guess my concern is that there are a number of, there are a number of folks who really worked on this resolution in the, in the weeks coming up to it, and to be, I think those of us, including Counselor LaBarge, Adams, and Dwight, are interested in seeing how, how a forum is set up. We don't, you know, and so, it's not about not trusting that EDLU would do something, or being skeptical about, for me, of having the name Forum Sponsored by the Committee on Economic Development, Housing, and Land Use, but rather, just being able to be involved in the process.
Let me just address that. So, and we have an EDLU meeting coming up, I believe it's next Tuesday at 5:00?
5:00.
5:00. It's not on the agenda, so, okay. It can be, maybe.
Late file.
Late file. Can we get that in, if you wanted to do that? And that would be a discussion about how to set it up. I mean, again, I just want to make sure we actually move this along, because...
I think...
We have a meeting, one more meeting next time, and then we have a, we have another meeting in, in July.
Counselor Carney.
I think that's great. What I'm a little worried about is hearing just that there might be a hesitation of the subcommittee to sponsor it unless it is billed as a forum sponsored by EDLU. And so I think, you know, if that...
I'm not attached to it.
Okay. Because I think what I'm hearing from other counselors...
I'm not attached to it, as long as there's, all I'm saying is, I want there to be a forum, and because we already started talking about it, discussing it, putting some things in place, we have some input on that, and we actually know what's gonna happen. And we would then stop doing any planning on that, I'd be happy to work with whoever is gonna sponsor it, but no.
To, to the proposed referral, may I suggest that this, in fact, be referred to EDLU for purposes of discussion of creating a forum for the city council, to be sponsored by the city council at large. Is that okay? Amendment?
It's okay with me.
A friendly amendment? For the referral?
Sounds...
All right. On the referral, all those in favor of referring the initial discussion of creating a forum for, this is a very long referral, for the vibrant sidewalks resolution, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. That's resolution number one. And that, uh, this is in second reading, this is upon the recommendation of the Northampton Youth Commission, it's a resolution in support of regulating high-capacity weapons. Whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution protects an individual's right to own weapons, but does not preclude the regulation and promotion of responsible ownership and possession. And whereas the technology of weaponry available to the public is advanced to include guns capable of meeting out vast indiscriminate death and injury, and whereas absent laws requiring universal qualification or background investigation, dangerous people are able to acquire these weapons and inflict horrible wanton trauma to communities, and whereas the Youth Commission of Northampton has organized and expressed their profound concern for the future and well-being of their city and home, and have petitioned the Northampton City Council to call for sensible gun control measures that include universal background checks, a ban on weapons defined as assault weapons, and a limitation on the capacity of ammunition magazines, and whereas over 250 Northampton residents between the ages of 13 and 18 signed a petition calling for a resolution by the Northampton City Council to express the appeal and support for the gun control measures proposed by President Barack Obama, now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton City Council supports the call of its younger citizens for the reasonable and effective gun control measures proposed by the president to be reintroduced to the Congress and advanced for a vote and to be ratified at deliberate speed, and be it further resolved that the Northampton City Council calls upon President Barack Obama, Senator Elizabeth Warren, Senator William Cohen, actually probably now will be Senator Edward Markey, and Congressman Jim McGovern to consider the concern expressed by Northampton's youth as they pursue these protections with urgency, diligence, and determination. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution shall present to President Barack Obama, Senator Elizabeth Warren, Senator William Cohen, and Congressman James McGovern. Is there a motion? Put it on the floor.
Move to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion?
I like the part about the background checks, but the rest of it, I won't support. So if it's all gonna be inclusive, I will vote no. I love the part about the background checks.
Counselor LaBarge?
I support all of the language, and I'm very proud to see our youths in our city to come forth and show and express their encouragement of doing this resolution. It means a lot, they're speaking out, and I think it's something that's extremely valuable, I think not just in this city, but all over.
I would add to what I said before, is that actually, I think, I feel actually a moral duty for a number of reasons to advance this, not the least of which was it was inspired by some people who can't even vote, who still have the same vested interests in the community as any of us. And the fact that these are quite reasonable calls, in fact, actually, many of them preexisted to this point, and the, and the country was provably safer as a result. There's all sorts of arguments relative... There's all sorts of arguments relative to, you know, pro and con on gun control, and that's not essentially what this is made about. But I think there's also a moral imperative to the citizens at large beyond just the youth that speak to us pretty clearly here. This is a significant portion of this cohort. And I, whatever we can do to reinforce, first of all, their citizenry, but more importantly, the spirit and the intent of their issue, I think it's incumbent upon us to vote in favor of this.
Counsel Carney.
I just want to reiterate, I'm really heartened to see a group of youth wanting to participate in the process, in the governmental process, and see that they can have an impact by stating their concerns about such a very serious issue.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
And any abstentions? The resolution passes in second read. Next up, this is the resolution calling for justice in Guantanamo Bay. And since we've read the other resolutions, I will also read this one. Whereas the practice of holding people in Guantanamo Bay Naval Base Detention Center, hereafter referred to as Guantanamo Bay Detention Center, represents a continuation of a repudiated foreign policy and a stain upon the character of the United States. And whereas over 100 of the 166 remaining prisoners at Guantanamo Bay Detention Center have been in a hunger strike for over 98 days to protest the lack of basic human and legal rights as outlawed by the U.S. Constitution and international law. And whereas 86 prisoners have been cleared for release since 2010 by an interagency task force, yet continue to be detained. And whereas it is wrong for any country, for any reason, to detain someone for over 11 years and not charge him with any crime. And whereas the United Nations have declared that the continued imprisonment of the Guantanamo Bay Detention Center prisoners is a, quote, "flagrant violation of international human rights law, and in itself constitutes a form of cruel, inhuman, and degrading treatment." And whereas the United Nations condemn the coercive practice of force-feeding of hunger-striking prisoners of the Guantanamo Bay Detention Center as a form of torture and a violation of medical ethics. And whereas residents of Northampton have long struggled to close the Guantanamo Bay Detention Center, from the activism of no more Guantanamo's to hunger-striking residents to the acts of civil disobedience to a Northampton proclamation denouncing the torturous conditions of Guantanamo on June 22, 2011. And whereas other municipalities, from the nearby town of Amherst to the city of Berkeley, have acted forthrightly to address the injustices at Guantanamo Bay by offering to accepted, cleared prisoners in their communities. And whereas President Obama pledged to close the prison over five years ago, and recently stated that the prison, quote, "is not necessary to keep America safe. It's expensive. It's inefficient. It hurts us in terms of international standing. It lessens cooperation with our allies in counterterrorism events." Then therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton City Council calls upon our federal representatives and senators to advocate and act forthrightly to see justice done in Guantanamo Bay. And be it resolved, we call upon President Obama to maintain his pledge to close Guantanamo Bay Detention Center. And be it resolved that the city of Northampton opposes the continued existence of the Guantanamo Bay Detention Center and the violation of the rule of law that it represents, and calls for all its prisoners to be charged or released. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the president, the attorney general of the United States, the United States senator of Massachusetts, and the United States representative for Massachusetts' 2nd district. Is there a motion? Put it on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Tacey.
I go back to what I said before. I know that President Obama said he would close it in 12 months after he was elected. For some reason, it's not closed, whether it's Congress or whatever it is. I don't know why it's not closed. Usually I can make a decision on something in these chambers that is based on the facts that you can actually put your hands on. We can do it right here in the city of Northampton. But I really do not have a clue as to why it's still open, why it hasn't closed, and I don't know anything about it. But apparently something is amiss, because the president has not closed it in 12 months. So anyway, I won't support it, because I don't know what I'm talking about.
Counsel Specter.
Well, you actually can put your hands on why it wasn't closed. It was in, I believe, 2009. It might have been in early 2010. The president did float that he wanted to close Guantanamo. The attorney general said he wanted to close Guantanamo, and the Republicans in Congress said, no way are we going to do this. We will not fund any transfer of prisoners. We will not give any money for it. And so they backed off. So there's your answer right there. So it's not necessarily, as you might be implying, that there was some new knowledge that the president had, and he changed his mind all of a sudden. It was pretty clear. He came out with his attorney general and said, we should close this. They actually had a specific recommendation of a prison in Illinois to send the prisoners to, and Congress said, we will pay nothing to do that. It's a federal prison. So you can go and look it up, and look at the closing from that period in 2009, 2010.
I read that.
I'm sorry. Counsel Tacey, you'll... If you're going... If you're directing...
I don't want to, not a back and forth, but I did read it. I read all the reports on it. Somewhere along the line, there's got to be a reason why it has not, why they did not fund it. Something, somebody must know something that I don't know.
Counsel Freeman Daniels.
Yeah, the reason is that the Republicans are in a mortal combat with President Obama starting in 2008. But I hope that you, the Counsel Tacey, would agree that there may be a lot of reasons, some of them even ones that compel people for doing things in this world or through the U.S. government that are unconstitutional. And perhaps, even if they're constitutional, they're wrong. In other words, there are reasons, people may have reasons, they may offer them, or they might keep them secret, but the reasons are still wrong. And that's what we have here. And you don't need special information. You just need your common sense and your understanding of natural rights, which Guantanamo Bay is a violation of. Thank you.
Counsel LeBarge, and then Counsel Tacey.
Thank you. Just have to look at this language on this resolution, and there's no question about it. It is definitely a civil rights issue, and it's definitely inhumane of them doing what they're doing. To just go ahead and detain and no charges is definitely a violation of their civil rights, and it's a human issue, a human rights issue.
Counsel Tacey.
I just want to say that I'm a registered independent. I don't play the Democrat and Republican role either way. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion on this resolution? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? And abstentions? It is passed in second read. And now we have the new resolution, which you heard about in public comment. This is a resolution, it's, I'm sorry, this is a late file. So...
Moves to suspend late-file rule?
Suspend Rule 38.
Second.
All those in favor of suspending the rule?
Aye.
Thank you. This is the resolution on drone aircraft. One, navigable airspace in drone aircraft. Whereas the former city councilor and mayor of Northampton, Calvin Coolidge, as president of the United States, signed into law the Air Commerce Act of 1926, establishing the national airspace system in the United States. And whereas this act declared that the airspace above the minimum safe altitudes of flight, generally understood to be about 500 feet or more above the surface, is navigable airspace. And whereas, the two whereas's here, whereas foreign and domestic aircraft, include drone aircraft, have statutory, quote, "right of transit," close quote, "through navigable airspace. And whereas the navigable airspace is preempted by federal laws and therefore not subject to state and local control. And whereas the Congress and the FAA are now expanding navigable airspace down to the ground in order to accommodate low-flying drone aircraft. And whereas such an expansion of navigable airspace threatens longstanding property rights, expectations of privacy, and state and local sovereignty. And whereas such an expansion of navigable airspace gives the FAA unprecedented authority to restrict any landowner activity that could potentially interfere with low-flying drone aircraft. And whereas such an expansion of navigable airspace is contrary to the findings of the landmark 1946 Supreme Court case, United States versus Cosby, which affirmed that the landowner, quote, "must have an exclusive control over the immediate reaches of the enveloping atmosphere," close quote, and that, quote, "the landowner owns at least as much of the airspace as they can occupy or use in connection with land." And whereas such an expansion of navigable airspace is contrary to the aviation statutes in Title 49 of the United States Code, which have been enforced largely unchanged since President Coolidge first signed them into law in 1926. Surveillance and weaponized drone aircraft, Part II. Whereas drone aircraft are poised to gain unprecedented access to private property at any altitude and for any purpose, including but not limited to the purpose of advertising, news, sports reporting, environmental monitoring, package delivery, recreation, and private investigations. And whereas police departments in the United States have begun using drone aircraft in the absence of clear guidance from lawmakers. And whereas some drone aircraft have been marketed to law enforcement agencies or designed to carry weapons, including tear gas, rubber buckshot, and firearms, and the introduction of such technology sends a chilling message to the American people. And whereas the rapid development of drone aircraft technology, driven largely producing drone aircraft for military use, poses a serious threat to the privacy and constitutional rights of the American people, including the residents of Northampton. And whereas the federal use of weaponized drone aircraft overseas is a poor precedent for their domestic use, in that the extrajudicial use of drones has turned public opinion against the United States government in Pakistan, Yemen, Somalia, and Afghanistan. And whereas drone aircraft strikes have killed more non-targeted people than those targeted, including men, women, and children, some known by name and others unidentified. Be it resolved that the Northampton City Council calls on the U.S. government to immediately end its practice of extrajudicial killing by armed drone aircraft. And be it further resolved that the city of Northampton affirms that within the city limits, the navigable airspace for drone aircraft shall not be expanded below the long-established airspace for manned aircraft. And be it further resolved that the city of Northampton affirms that within the city limits, landowners subject to state laws and local ordinances have exclusive control of the immediate reaches of the airspace, and that no drone aircraft shall have the, quote, "public right of transit," close quote, "through this private property." And be it further resolved that the city of Northampton calls on the United States Congress, the Federal Aviation Administration, and the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to respect legal precedent and constitutional guarantees of privacy, property rights, and local sovereignty in all matters pertaining to drone aircraft and navigable airspace. Now, accept the motion. Put this on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, oh, go ahead.
Okay. Counsel Freeman Daniels, then Counsel...
Counsel Tacey.
I think it's a real invasion of your privacy to use the drone aircraft in the United States. I think it's, I think it's really overreaching. I didn't care so much about the, maybe want to track my phone call or look at my email. I've got to find, there's nothing in my phone calls or emails that's going to excite anybody. But I think this is a stretch. This is a real reach. This is overreaching by the government. And to limit, to limit technology and advancement by small business and things such as that, I think, is detrimental to our economy, to the way things grow. You're crushing people's rights to do business. I just, I'm going to support it. I'll support this resolution without even a second thought.
Counsel LeBarge, then Counsel Carney.
I think Maureen had her hand up.
Hand up first.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I support this resolution, and I also find it really interesting because of the local implications. Certainly, it's very interesting to have the reference to President Calvin Coolidge, former mayor of Northampton, former city councilor. But also the present-day implications, as Professor Voss pointed out here, that we have, you know, a highly respected innovative engineering program at Smith College. And the implications of what's going on right now in terms of making all of that lower space into navigable space really squashes the potential of those departments. And for the purpose of creating more room for certified, registered drone aircraft to use that same space. So, yeah, I'm really troubled by the policy moves by the FAA. And, I mean, we're a small city in western Massachusetts. It would be interesting to see how, if this passes tonight, how this is received in Washington, and whether, you know, I'm hoping that there'll be at least some effort then by our own representatives in Congress and the senators to really look very seriously at what kind of implications they have. That's just that piece. Then I'm also highly troubled by the use of drones to not only spy on American citizens, but the way that they've been used to kill innocent men, women, and children all over the world.
Counsel Freeman Daniels.
I just have a technical element about this resolution. It looks like a combination of sponsorship by counselors and citizens. It's like a sort of a hybrid between that, between a normal measure and a citizens initiative. I really appreciate the speeches by Professor Voss and the other members during public comment, but I move, I don't think we can, the council would be acting appropriately by having them cosponsor this. So I move that we strike those cosponsors after Counsel Specter.
Second. This to the motion, Counsel Tacey?
No.
Okay. This to the motion, Counsel Carney.
I would just ask, is there something that you read in our rules that will prohibit?
It's directed to you, yes.
Thank you. My understanding is that any measure that is not initiated by the council or the executive branch is a citizen initiative, which we would need 250 signatures collected from all the wards in the city and so on.
Or a combination?
I couldn't say.
To the point, the amendment, I think Counsel Freeman Daniels actually points out something that I think needs to be reconciled at some point, but I think right now, for the purpose of this resolution, I think it's reasonable to remove these sponsors. We know that they sponsor it. I mean, maybe historically, they will not be represented on this document, but that means they'll be targeted less easily. And so, Counsel Specter.
Yeah, I'm going to support this ordinance as well, and I agree.
Well, actually, we're speaking to the motion. The motion...
To the motion, to strike.
Amend.
If you'll wait, I'll let you at the floor...
I would like to move that question.
Okay. So all those in favor of striking the citizens' sponsors listed on this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Now, Counsel...
Well, I'd like to thank the sponsors who are just stricken here from this. And I think one of the things, it was really heartening to see the folks from Holyoke come and to know that this is going to move to another town, because I think that's one of the key things here, is that this is now a place where we are beginning something. And I think other towns, we're going to make sure Amherst knows about this and Holyoke. So thank you very much for bringing it forward, and it was really, it was great to have you bring other people in here to let us know it's moving beyond this council.
Counsel Tacey.
I kind of wonder what the penalty is for violating their code or their law or something.
Well, unfortunately...
For an inch, I know, but if it's an inch above the grass or, I mean, what about my hammock?
That's attached to it.
It's attached to a tree, I hope.
But your paper airplane...
If I can speak to this, I've been in consultation with Professor Voss and Jeff Napolitano and Paki, actually, for about this sometime, for some time now. One of the concerns, of course, is bringing it on top of all the other resolutions, and Counsel LeBarge, you can follow, was that, you know, the standard knock against resolutions, I talked about earlier before what the good parts of resolutions are. Standard knock is like, well, who the hell is North... Standard knock is like, well, who the hell is Northampton City Council to say these things? Well, by the way, this is unprecedented. What we're seeing happen, actually, the FAA rules are pending, and there's very little coverage or very little alarm. And technology far outstrips law and the protections that law afford. And I was giving an example earlier to Counsel LeBarge. During prohibition, rum runners were easily busted because phones are relatively new. There was no problem about wiretapping. Anybody could go and tap a phone, listen to their conversations, and arrest them based on the conversations they heard in the course of those conversations, because the law hadn't caught up. Now, great that the law enforcement was able to do that, perhaps, but more importantly was the seeding of privacy rights and the rights for you. I mean, we're all steeped in this discussion about the NSA's data mining, you know, phone monitoring, and things like that. We are in a new age where technology increases exponentially and the laws plod along very slowly, as proof tonight. This is the process by which laws are created. We are asking the government to give this a lot more scrutiny than seems to have been given, certainly with a scrutiny with an eye towards protecting our rights as citizens and not seeding the airspace an inch above the ground, because none of us can sink lower than that radar. And I think that, I have a feeling that we are, at the same time, it might be a difficult concept to wrap your mind around, and I certainly don't subscribe to a lot of paranoid notions that people have often extolled. This actually gives me chills. This concerns me a great deal. And also, part two. Part two, under Gerald Ford, we actually, we decided that we were not going to sign off on assassinations, that we were not going to participate in assassinations. Now, the argument here is that we are at war, but a lot of these actual actions, these surgical strikes by drones, are pointing in fact assassinations. And they are authorized and easily done and prosecuted with drones. And we have seen the worst, I hope we've seen the worst of what drones can do. And on the other side, we are stultifying the best that they can do. And I think it's really incumbent upon us to say, leave our homes alone. Don't leave the drones alone. I think that we, it is, we are seeding far too much about what it means to be a U.S. citizen and what the Constitution means. We've been nibbling at the edges for some time, and it's a death of a thousand cuts, and we will lose all the virtues contained in that document if we continue to sit back in silence and allow this to go by without, at the very least, saying rather clearly, we don't agree. Counsel Adams, did you have your hand up? Okay, Counsel LeBarge is next. I'm sorry, Counsel Tacey, then Counsel Tacey.
I'm definitely, I'm telling you right now, I'm not happy about this. I want to thank the citizens who came in and talked about what this resolution was all about. I find this also to be a violation of human rights. And I know that every one of us, we have our rights to our privacy and our property. And I would not appreciate having something like this in back of my property. I think it's wrong, and I'm glad this came forth, and it needs to go where we're sending it.
So, we could probably expect something out of Congress, like in early 2300?
I don't, I don't know what to expect from, I don't think we'll see much of anything out of Congress.
No, I don't.
For some time, but, although immigration reform is just moved.
That'll be also in 2300.
That could be.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions? Pass this first reading, and the second reading will be at our meeting in July. And it's time for one-minute announcements. Who's got something to say? Okay, Counsel Spector, then Counsel LeBarge.
On Tuesday, July 2nd, here in Counsel's chamber, at 7:00, there'll be a meeting about parking around the Road neighborhood. So that's right here, this coming Tuesday, July 2nd, at 7:00.
Thank you, Counsel LeBarge.
Yes, I was at a meeting at the District Attorney's Office this week on a Citizens' Board Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to give you heads up, so you could look at your calendars and mark the date. It's save the date, 11 November 20, 2013, Youth Mental Health. And it's the Second Annual Safe School Summit. And it's going to be at the Claridan Hotel and Conference Center at 7:45 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., and a reception to follow. And what they are actually going to be doing is targeting audience such as school bus drivers, cafeteria attendants, nurses, school community partners, superintendents, principals, deans, teachers, guidance counselors, and school resource officers. And I heard it's going to be a very well-planned conference.
I hope so. It sounds pretty big. Counsel Adams.
Also sponsored by the Northwestern District Attorney's Office, on Wednesday, October 16th, from 8 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at Greenfield Community College, is the Second Annual Youth Conference on Substance Abuse Prevention with the keynote speaker, Dr. Marisa Silvery.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Counsel Freeman Daniels.
I want to, this is a past announcement. I want to thank the War III Neighborhood Association for sponsoring the override forum that took place June 19th. I want to thank Counsel Tacey for volunteering to represent the opponents to the override and our mayor for representing the proponents. It was the only forum that I know of that allowed for interaction in the city. And I thought it was very valuable and very well-attended, and the War III Neighborhood Association does it again. Thank you.
Any other one-minute announcements? We will now recess for finance, and the Chair of Finance is not here, so instead, I will turn the chair and ask the court to call the roll.
Counsel Boy.
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge.
Present.
Here.
The mayor is present. I'm not sure if the mayor wants to, why don't you step up, Your Honor, and Susan Wright's here as well. Why don't, actually, why don't you give your narrative first?
Okay, well, certainly, well, obviously, as the council knows, the voters on Tuesday voted in favor of the Proposition 2.5 override question to allow the city to raise an additional $2.5 million in revenues. And as outlined when I made the proposal, because that's now been accepted, I'm coming back to you with a couple of orders in response to that outcome. I'm not sure the order you have them on your agenda. The first, one of them is a revised order that, this would be the appropriation for the general fund budget. And so we've updated the numbers to reflect the additional revenue that we would be putting into the general fund budget, as well as a second order, which is to create and then appropriate funds to the new Fiscal Stability Override Stabilization Fund, which was part of the plan that I put forward. And so those are the two revised orders that I'm submitting tonight. And I included with that a memorandum to the council, which outlined how we allocate the additional $2.5 million. And it's a, you know, fairly brief listing of them. And we've also gone ahead, based on these numbers, and we've updated the revenue sections and the summer expense summary sections of the budget book that you have, so we can give you those, which you can sort of insert. We're not going to reprint the entire budget. We figure it's four to six pages. We're going to just give you an addendum that you can slide into your budget books. So we prepared that as well for you. But I'm happy to answer questions that you have about it, go through it, whatever finance committee would.
Well, I'm trying to consider procedure, given the amount of orders that we, the financial orders that we have here. And I was going to ask the finance committee to consider recommending moving to the floor the entire group of orders, including the, this is the amended FY 2014 general fund budget of $77,765,005 to this full city council. Just the amended? All right, so that's pretty much all we have to refer, so we don't have to do all the items. And that way, we can open it up to the council floor. It'll be on the council floor, but I will accept a motion for.
I would like to refer this right to the council.
Seconded.
Okay, so this is, were the recommendations backed to the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. It's made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, with that, I will, we have no other financial orders other than that. What do we got? Free cash, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Stabilization, you talked about.
Right. Okay. This is what the mayor was just referring to. This is pursuant to Chapter 45b of the Mass General Laws, the city that council hereby authorized the creation of a fiscal stability or override stabilization fund for the purpose of supplementing the general operating cost of the city and the schools in future fiscal years, fiscal year 2014. Vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $773,715 to this fund. Is there a motion to recommend?
To recommend.
Second, okay, it's moving to second. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoy, it's ordered that $200,000 from the FY 13 general fund, undesignated fund balance, otherwise known as free cash, be appropriated to the capital stabilization fund. Accept the motion?
Yeah.
Or would you put it on the floor? Okay, and it's seconded? And you'd like to discuss it, Counsel Tacey?
Yeah, just a brief explanation.
Sure. You may remember, and I can refer you to it, in my, when I presented the budget, actually trying to pull it up, I had indicated at the time that, I think it was in my message, but I certainly know it was something that we discussed, my intention to, as we got to the close of the fiscal year, to appropriate some of the remaining free cash that we had in 2013 into our stabilization fund, again, as part of our overall effort to rebuild our stabilization reserve accounts. And again, if we do this now, before the close of the fiscal year, then that money stays in those stabilization accounts, in those funds. If we don't, that free cash after June 30th flows to, is sort of frozen until free cash is certified in FY 14. I would like to invest that into our stabilization funds, which serves the purpose of rebuilding those funds, but also, you know, the larger goals we've talked about in terms of restoring those funds for our bond rating purposes as well.
I guess what, the question I really wanted to explain to the public is the difference, I guess, between, you have two here for $200,000. One's a capital stabilization.
Yes.
Stabilization.
Exactly. And so we have.
Did I get that?
Yeah, so we have, well, possibly after tonight, we'll have three stabilization funds, but we have a general stabilization fund, which is usually for general purposes. Again, it requires a two-thirds vote of this council in order to appropriate money out of that fund. And it's intended to be for emergencies that arise during the year. And then the capital stabilization fund is on a similar vein, but it's primarily directed for capital expenses. And those are two of the more common stabilization funds that cities and towns create. And again, those sort of remain through the budget, once the budget year closes, they remain intact. Anything else that's not in one of these funds that's been approved, that's a mass general law approved fund, will flow to free cash, and we lose any access to it until it gets recertified. So, I mean, it's, so, it's sort of a twofold reason for wanting to do this. And I was quickly trying to scam, but I remember at some point, when I first submitted the budget to you, I had indicated that depending on how those funds looked at the end of the year, we wanted to do this. We wanted to come forward with an order to put some of it, as we did at the close of the last fiscal year.
Okay. I just wanted to identify the two, because they're pretty identical in numbers and everything, so.
Indeed, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Freeman Daniels, you have a question?
So these are just, we have to move them out of free cash into two slush funds, so that we don't lose access to them before they're.
I wouldn't use the term slush fund. I don't know if that's what you were talking about. Stabilization fund. Either terminology I might use.
Slush.
Yeah.
In between snow and ice.
Yeah, exactly.
Counsel Freeman Daniels was using some liberties to poke fun.
I didn't mean to mix the two of these up.
No, no, I think, that's fine, yeah. And we're, and on the one, so we're now talking about the first one, which is, and I don't know if you're ready to vote, if anyone wants to hear anymore from the mayor on this point?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, the $200,000 from FY 13 general fund, undesignated fund balance, be appropriated for capital stabilization. Please say aye.
Aye.
And, okay, the next one is also upon the, and as Counsel Tacey pointed out, it's very similar, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoy, $200,000 from the FY 13 general fund, undesignated fund balance, otherwise known as free cash, be appropriated to the stabilization fund. I'll accept a motion to refer, to recommend. Counsel Tacey?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Tacey?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. I was reading.
I know. Just wanted to, because if you don't vote, we don't get a majority vote, so. Okay, now we can close.
Move to close finance.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourned out of finance, please say aye.
Aye. Still reading.
All right, we're back to the regular council meeting, and I'm still presiding. Okay. Well, guess what we're up to? So, what's first coming to you is the amended, all right, I'm, this is the amended language here. This is upon the recommendation of the mayor, ordered that the sum of $77,765,005, which is the full amount necessary for the fiscal year 2014 general fund budget, July 1st, 2nd, 2013 to June 30th, 2014, be appropriated for the purposes stated. To meet this appropriation, $1,728,110 will be raised and appropriated from parking meter receipts reserved, $25,000 from cemetery perpetual care trust fund, $10,000 from cemetery sale of lots receipts reserved, $1,713,905 from the sewer enterprise fund, $855,531 from the water enterprise funds, $97,547 from the solid waste enterprise funds, $6,000 from what lends filing fees, $3,000 from waterways fund, $12,145 from the Community Preservation Act administrative funds, $160,000 from Comcast iNet Reserve Fund, $145,000 from energy rebates, and $34,154 from the Zurb Lee Station debt service. And $72,974,613 will be raised and appropriated. and appropriated.
Second.
We, I'm sorry, there's the motion to, I will accept a motion to amend.
Amend.
And any discussion on the amended, yeah, actually, we can now put the motion on the floor now that it's, first of all, we can now actually, we have to vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment and then.
Right.
So.
Sorry, Mr. President.
We're voting on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you all ready? Any discussion? Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Amendment is the additional funds raised from the override. And I think we should hear from the mayor about how.
Sure. Yeah.
Thank you again. You, you may remember when I, I didn't bring the big chart, but I got the smaller version that you have, that we proposed, when we put the override package forward, we proposed some allocations of how we would do that broadly. And obviously, at the time, projecting $726,285 into city budget, public schools, $1 million, override stabilization, $773,715. This memo that I provided gives a little bit more of a detailed breakdown on that. North Hampton Public Schools, you'll see, the first item would receive $985, but then you have to quickly follow below that to see that, that additional $15,000 is going, it's going to go into the central services budget, but it's for purposes of funding the custodial position at the AFK pool, which was one of the budget cuts that the school department had to make. You can then see that we create the fiscal stability override stabilization fund for the $773,715, which you'll have an order later on to create and appropriate. And then we have some of our, well, the salary reserve, the capital stabilization fund, which again are, these were investments that we feel are critical to make, again, to get those funds back up to the level that they need to be at in order to maintain our, our bond rating. Police is obviously one of the ones that was discussed. That's to restore the four patrol officer positions at $188,000. $75,000 is for our capital project budget, which again is the funding that we have on hand to be able to fund capital projects as they, as they come up. We wanted to bring that up to a more realistic level. And then the, the next series of them, there's a DPW increase, restoration to, to of their seasonal laborers that were eliminated as part of the cuts. And then the remainder of them, you'll see our restoration of cuts that we needed to make to the O and M budgets of several of our city departments, central services, the public safety dispatch, building inspections, board of health, treasurer, planner, collector, and even the city clerk. When we were meeting with department heads to try to level fund budgets, one of the things we did was go through sort of line by line each of their budgets and made cuts largely on the O and M side, because in a small department like the treasurer's office where there's two people, and large, most of their discretionary budget is their O and M budgets. And so in some cases, in the case of the treasurer's office, for example, we essentially, you know, carved out a, a large chunk of his O and M budget, which he uses for financial transactions, for the services that he brings in when he's doing his title work and those kinds of things. Similarly, with the collector, the city clerk, that was another area that we had asked her to cut her O and M budget. But again, we know that she's going to be buying the supplies and the certified paper and the, all the other things that she needs to carry out her duties in, as the keeper of, of our records. And so this restores those cuts to, to keep those services up in those, that lower section of cuts. But the big ones obviously are the schools and the fiscal stability override stabilization fund, and the restoration of the police positions, and the two DPW seasonal positions as well.
And actually, I'm just going to remind us as we continue on the discussion here, our opportunities on, at least our authority allows us to cut or amend in some levels or, and we're voting up or down on this budget. So I would like to keep the debate on those points, if that's possible. Counsel LeBarge?
Mayor, on the North Hampton Public Schools.
Mm-hmm.
Does this include busing also?
Well, it's interesting that you say that because I think, well, they, they may be done, I don't know. But this, my, the, the school committee was meeting this evening as well, having a similar special meeting in anticipation of this meeting. And they, the superintendent and the administrative leadership team was going to be presenting to the school committee their recommendations for restoring the cuts that have been made in their budget, equal to the $985,000. I do know that in that recommendation that was going, because I was given a preview of it with the superintendent, as the chair of the committee, they were recommending the restoration of busing to the high school, which was one of the major items that was cut. And so that was among the recommendations, as well as, you know, restoration of teaching positions, school supply and textbook budgets, and a, and a series of other items. So that, again, that's what was being presented. The school committee has the final say as to those specific cuts. And I, I don't know the outcome of, of that discussion at this point. I wasn't able to be in two places at once tonight. So, yeah.
We appreciate your time here.
Yep.
Other, other questions, Counsel Tacey?
Yeah, it's kind of a statement. I, I intend to support this. I don't do it without, I do it with some apprehension. I, I do know that this has severely divided the city. And the, the article, Bill Dwight had asked me on his radio one day about NoHo versus Han. And I told him I did not make that distinction, and I still don't.
Nor do I.
I want the city to, always want the city to speak with one voice. And the city has voted this override through. And it severely divided the city for every four point, there was 4.6 people that voted for it, and there was six people that voted, there's against it, rather, and six people that voted for it. And that's fine. There's no, that's the way the vote turned out. My only suggestion would have been, in the media, rather than this, which is, we have crushed the opposition picture, would have been something more in the line of, I understand this has created great hardships.
Counsel.
Well, anyway, I wanted to say that, and I got it out before I get shut off.
Well, Counsel.
I would like to say that I'm not through yet.
Okay. But allow me to just say right now that we are speaking to the points in the budget. First, we have no control of the media, and we have no control of the way the media represents these things. And in fact, it's not germane or to the color of the issue that we're discussing. I understand your feelings about this.
I absolutely disagree, but that's all right. I've already said my piece.
Okay. Counsel Schwartz, I, I would rather we not continue along this line.
I think I am entitled, since I have seen that photo and that's a direct comment about me, I think I'm entitled for one sentence of clarification.
I'll give you one sentence to respond to.
Thank you.
The thing that's already been spoken out of order, and I would like that to be the end of this.
I appreciate that, but I just cannot, I cannot not respond. I want to clarify that that picture over which I have no control was, had nothing to do with the opposition. It had to do with absolute thrill that we preserved our basic services and our public education. I, there is no sense of opponent in this city, as far as I'm concerned. We are all in this together, and that was pure joy and relief at preserving our basic public services that we, that we owe every citizen in North Hampton. That's what that motion was all about.
Back, back to, back to the questions about the budget, which is what we are charged to do. Are there more questions of the mayor? Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Yeah, thank you. We have $985,000 we're allocating to the schools for the school committee to work on today.
That is correct.
Is that correct? So, so we have, so they're doing it along a parallel process essentially right now.
That's correct.
They're elected, they're duly elected to make those decisions. So the $255,000 into salary reserve, do you mind commenting on what, why we're putting, you know, almost a quarter million dollars, or more than a quarter million dollars into that fund?
Yes. So salary reserve is, is for purposes of when we have, for example, when people retire, when people, that, that we paid some of the, the, the end of service funds to people that they received when, upon their retirement. The other important function, as you may recall from when I came before you for a transfer out of that account, was for the settlement of collective bargaining related issues. And as I discussed during all of my budget hearings and during my presentation to the council, we, we wanted to be, we wanted to make sure we put funds aside because we still have a, we still have three years of a firefighter's contract that is in arbitration. And we want to make sure that we have, well, we've put, put funds in there that could cover what the city's position in those, in that arbitration has been. Because when that decision comes down, again, we need to be able to fund it. Those PS lines of the fire department budget were, have not been funded since FY 2010. So for FY 11, 12, and 13, as well as into 14, have not, are not representative of any collective bargaining agreement, any cost of living, et cetera. So we felt it would be prudent to put some funds aside and reserve for that. So that's the purpose of that and of that, some of those additional funds. And that was something that when I did my town hall budget meetings, I listed what some of our potential liabilities, liabilities that we knew, and some of the outstanding liabilities. And that was one of the last ones on, you know, healthcare had been one for a while until we moved that to the other side of the ledger. This has been one of the other ones that was lingering out there. So that's why that's in there.
Thank you. Counsel Crum.
Similarly, can you just give a little more detail for the capital projects line? Just tell us which projects we weren't able to do that we may now be able to do with this additional income?
Yeah. So we, as, in your, you know, in the budget book itself, there was a capital improvement program suggest, report. And obviously, the capital improvement program committee had met and had reviewed many more projects than we were able to fund in that program. And so we've expended some of that funding, but what it kind of drives home for us, if you look at the actual, how we're funding this, the capital improvement program itself, is that as part of the increases in the investments we're making into capital stabilization and stabilization, we also need to increase that capital account as well, which is what we use to fund our capital improvement program. And so that's, that's why we want to move some additional funds in there, so that as we, if we have other capital projects that come up in FY 14, we have funding to be able to fund them. You know, this year, for example, you may remember, we had the incident with the Academy of Music fire escape, which needed to be repaired somewhat urgently because the, it had been essentially decertified, and we needed to make emergency repairs. So we wanted to be able to have some funding for those kinds of capital projects.
Okay. So it doesn't represent some specific projects?
We would come forward to you if, when, if and when such a project was identified, that's, then we would come, come forward to you to let you know about that project. But it's not, we're, I'm not proposing an amendment to the capital plan that you have in front of you.
Yeah, exactly.
You would still have to, you would still have to vote those funds. But if you look at the allocation that we have currently, one of the things we're trying to do, again, is to move away from, as I said, as a sort of a broken record, the reliance on free cash to, to fund our, our, our operating budget. And capital is a, you know, that sort of capital for the kinds of small things, because we're not going to, you know, go out to bond if we have to fix a fire escape in an emergency. We have to be able to have the funds to do that. So that's, I view it as another part of our, of our reserve position and having those kinds of funds.
Thank you.
Counsel Freeman-Daniels?
Just to pick up on this, on the same discussion, really, what we're looking at is, was a very slim budget before this, before the vote. And after the fiscal stability stabilization fund and the $1 million roughly to the schools, I did some math here. It looks as though we're trying to fill in about, only, only about $35,000 to all the different operations and maintenance, to a variety of city departments. Basically, I think $35,200, $35,300. That's a, a very small amount. And I, I'm confident that they're going to be running on a, still running on a very tight, lean budget for this upcoming year. Is that fair to say?
Most definitely. And in some cases, some of those investments don't even bring them back to what their O and M budgets were in FY 13. In the case of the collector, for example, in the case of the planning department, we're not fully restoring their O and M budgets, but we're trying to put some back in so that they're not, so that they're not completely decimated. And so that is definitely fair. And the question often comes up, you know, why, why does it always, you're always talking about the schools and police and public safety? Well, that's because that, they represent such a large portion of our budget and our personnel. And, and, you know, you have the schools and the police department are two of our largest city budgets. You know, we have to have a collector's office, we have to have a treasurer's office, and those are, you know, a set, limited number of personnel, and most of their budgets are personnel. So in order to try to make cuts in city hall, you know, we, we have to go on the O and M side. You know, I, we've made some cuts in, in my office. We've reduced a couple of powers in the, in the budget for my staff. And there were some other areas where we've reduced hours as well. But these are the things that we felt were important to bring back. Again, because these are departments like the board of health, like the building inspector, they need these, these resources to be able to carry out their mission.
And can I make a request, an informal request, not a formal request, but one I hope that you'll hear at our next meeting in July, that we can get an update around these, I know you don't want me to call them by what I said earlier.
Sure.
Around these stabilization funds and so on.
Sure.
So that we could see how, how we've been doing and.
I can give you an update. If you'd like, I can give you a quick update. So when you, when you vote tonight on the stabilization fund, that will bring that balance up to $891,000. When you vote on the capital stabilization fund, that will bring it up to $700,000. Now, I have to, that sounds like a lot of money. I understand that. But you have to understand that what the bond rating agencies are telling us is that those reserves should, for a city our size, for the bond rating that we have, we should have on the order of 10% of our, of our general operating revenues in reserve.
1%.
And we're, this gets us close to 2%.
So can you repeat the numbers again, please?
Capital stabilization, if you approve the transfer, 705,472. And stabilization, just regular stabilization, 891,255.
Other questions?
Yeah. 10% would be about $8 million that we would need to have in our stabilization accounts to, I know the mayor of Chicopee was just trumpeting that their, I forgot what it was, their stabilization fund was $11 million. it was, their stabilization fund was $11 million. So, again, I, I showed charts during my, during my budget presentation of similar-sized cities and what their reserve positions were. And this was one of the kind of corollaries that I talked about during those meetings about one of the other pressing fiscal issues that we need to keep our eye on.
Counselor Spack?
Could you just explain, because a lot of people watching may not know that, so what difference does it make if our bond rating goes down? Could you explain what happens if we lose our currently really high bond rating and were to, it were to drop?
Well, one of the examples I used during the town hall budget meetings was the police station borrowing. And we asked our financial analysts who help us with those bonding projects if we had had to go out to bond and had been, our rating had been downgraded, just, just one rating.
Just one step.
That the, the impact in terms of our borrowing costs, they were estimating on the order of about $450,000 additional borrowing costs. So, those would be, that would be $450,000 we would have to take out of the general fund that we're discussing right now to cover the debt service. So, so it's, it's integrally tied, I mean, not, just setting aside the fact that you, it's a prudent thing to have reserves for urgencies, for contingencies that arise, but there's the added, this is part of, when they look at the city's fiscal health, the reserve position is one of the most important ones, particularly having come out of a recession where both companies and municipalities relied on reserves to get through that recession. And so, many of us are trying to now rebuild them.
Thank you.
Questions? This is on the amended language. The amendment before you, no?
What's her?
Counsel, Counsel Tacey and then Counsel Freeman.
What's the percentage on a return on investment right now?
I think we were showing it in our, it's, it's, you know, on the order of a little less than 1% is what we're returning on for our short-term stuff. And the treasurer could obviously give you more accurate, but that was one of the, and I think even in our revenues showed that. What's that? Yeah, we downgraded our estimate for revenues just because interest rates have been, have remained so low. But that's one of the, that was one of the other charts I showed in our, in the budget historically, that, you know, there were periods where we were realizing, you know, $600,000 a year in interest on, on that short-term money. And now it's, you know, by less than $200,000 that we have. So it's a very, that's another one of those hidden revenue cuts that the economy has, has, has put on us.
Susan, do you want to speak?
I just wanted to say in fiscal 13, we budgeted $123,000 for investment income, and we're falling about $50,000 short. So in fiscal 14, we've lowered it to $75,000, so, and it was, as he said, up around $600 several years ago.
I know it amounted to a, to a half a million dollar cut over the last few years. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I just once again want to applaud you, Mr. Mayor, for, for your work on, on keeping the budget relatively conservative and for trying to build up the city's reserves, and for your, your innovative plan to, to allocate the funds from the override into a fund to try to stave off another one when we experience a budget shortfall. And I look forward to approving this budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Hi.
Counsel LaBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And a roll call on the amendment. As amended, okay.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Hi.
This is on the...
That was the amendment, this is...
The budget, we approve the amendment, now we're as amended.
Hi.
Counsel LaBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
All right, yep, okay. Mary is guiding me through this, we're taking orders two through three.
Trust your judgment of how your...
Don't trust my judgment, this is not... This is essentially following the same breakdown that I, with Counsel Murphy.
Okay.
If everyone's okay with that, if we proceed the way we did before.
Fine.
So it's taking some as a group?
Just taking ones that naturally conform with each other as a group.
Fine.
Is that okay? Is everyone all right with that? Okay. So, financial orders two through three, that's the Water Enterprise Fund budget, the Sewer Enterprise Fund budget, and the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund budget.
As a group, move to...
Second.
And motions made, and, and further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Hi.
Counsel LaBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Five through 23. I should point out that, I'm giving Mary some due, she, she actually set up the new agenda with the gaps in this space, so...
Different gap.
I, believe me, she owns it whether she knows it or not. This is, this is items five through 23, these are the revolving funds, and is there a motion to move them?
So moved.
As a group?
Okay. Any discussion on these? Roll call, please.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Hi.
Counsel LaBarge?
Present, I mean, yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Yes. Items 24 and 25.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Spector? Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
And 26 through 33.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the?
Counsel Schwartz?
Counsel Spector? Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Hi.
Counsel LaBarge?
Yes.
Next up is the late file. This is the financial order to authorize the creation of the fiscal stability override stabilization fund of $773,715. There's also a request for two readings on this for reasons that are probably pretty evident.
To approve.
Second.
Motions made and approved. And seconded, any discussion on this? Yeah, Counsel Freeman Daniels?
This is the creation of a new fund, stabilization fund requires a two-thirds vote to take money out of it.
As I understand it.
Yes.
It's the kids in the gallery or nothing.
Okay.
This is the, for folks watching at home, this is the stabilization fund that was, that the mayor promised to establish if the override should pass to assure protection that would require authorization from the council over the proceeding and over the following years. So with the intention of avoiding, well, assuring fiscal stability, I think, I think would be a more appropriate way to put it. So, the motion's made, seconded.
Suspend Rule 14.
Wait, we need to revoke first here, hang on a second. And is there any further discussion on this?
No.
A roll call, please. Oh, for the late file vote, this is the late file vote.
So we can just...
So all those in favor of suspending rules for the late file, please say.
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I'll accept the motion and put this on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Now, any further discussion on this side? Roll call, please.
Yes. Counsel Tacey?
Hi.
Counsel Adams?
Hi.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Hi.
Counsel LaBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Carter?
Yes.
I'll accept the motion to suspend rules, Counsel. 14, Rule 14.
Second.
There's a second. The motion is to suspend Rule 14. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? I'll accept the motion for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Counsel Adams?
Aye.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
I want everyone to appreciate that Mary has to, the order of roll call, she has to readjust by one every time?
Yes.
I don't know how she does it, because I actually try to anticipate when my, it's going to come up. Sometimes it's after Counsel Carney, sometimes not. This is...
Actually, I have made one on this board.
This is item number 34, the budgetary transfers, this is second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Hi.
Counsel LaBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Aye.
Yes.
Coming up next is, this is also in second reading, this is the appropriations of $5,272,050 from the FY 2013 general fund, undesignated fund balance to fund improvements at the Florence Fields Recreation Area.
Move to...
Second. Could you say that one more time?
Yes, I can.
$5,000.
I heard $5 million.
I'm sorry, it's, sorry, $5,000. I did say that wrong. We need another override for that item. It's $5,272,050.
I'm going to get it from my ward when I got home tonight.
Where do you see the grass in that?
Well, that's some expensive tailings that we just gave up. All right, so this is, this is $5,000, $5,272,050. And there was a motion, and is there a second?
I think there was.
Any discussion on second reading besides the drastically reduced amount that I just offered? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Hi.
Counsel LaBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector? Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Aye.
Next up is appropriation for $200,000. This is from the FY 13 general fund, undesignated fund balance to the capital stabilization fund. There is also a request for two readings on this.
I moved 36 and 37 as a group.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion to, for 36 and 37, if you want on the floor, is your...
A second.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion? Roll call, please. This is first reading on both, we haven't moved to suspend rules or the second reading. Yes.
Aye, aye.
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Accept a motion.
Suspend Rule 14.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Accept a motion for second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to point out that we have a long way to go to get back, to get our reserves up to 10%. I'd be happy with 5%, 3%. But, one, I'm curious whether we can count the override stabilization fund as part of those reserves.
It does. And that was one of the other reasons, it does count toward...
As far as the bond, as far as our...
Yes. And they look at it that way because it does have that extra protection of the two-thirds requirement. So it does, it's now part of the other stabilization funds which get counted toward our reserves.
So this is the, today we're adding 1.1, almost 1.2 million to our, to our reserves, which will help preserve our bond rating and our, our creditworthiness for the foreseeable future. So, and I think that's, you can never really foresee very, very far with municipal finance, I guess, but we have a plan and, and we hope that we can stick to it, and I think this is an integral part of it.
Any other comments, discussion? Roll call, please.
Hi.
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Hi.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Yes. That is the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the, all the councils for your participation in the process, and obviously to all the citizens of the city who participated in the process. And the city finance director does have those now revised revenue and expenditure pages that she can give you, which show the revenues newly allocated. And I also need to tell you that there's a couple of finance committee contracts that need signatures that she'll distribute as well.
Oh, oh, great. I should, I'd also like to say thank you to the mayor and to Susan. What's that? Yeah, yeah. But I'd like to thank the mayor and Susan Wright for a very arduous process that's been agreed to by all sides, and at least that's one thing we can agree on. It has been difficult, and it is the nature of these systems, that they are difficult, built into our existing conflicts. And I appreciate the temperament by which you approached and advocated for your position. I really do appreciate it. Susan, thank you so much for your...
I do have to just add one editorial piece, which is to say that the state legislature, on the other hand, has not completed its budget.
Right.
They are going to pass a supplemental budget to get them through the next week until they can finalize their budget. So just throw that in for comparison.
Just to let you know also, the tolls have been really established for the western part of the Turnpike. Us again, paying off the big dig and having thumbs, noses thumbed at us.
Recession, can I call recess?
There is a request for recess, and I will gavel this committee to recess in for seven minutes. Welcome back, coming out of recess. This is the city council meeting, June 27, 2013. I'm city council president, Mike White. Next up on the agenda, this is actually for referral, should be noted, this is upon the recommendation of Counsel Jesse M. Adams and Counsel Paul D. Spector, an order that at regular municipal election to be held in North Hampton on November 5, 2013, that the following question be placed on the ballot pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 60. The question is, shall the city vote to accept the provisions of Section 6C of Chapter 40 of the General Laws which authorize cities and towns to appropriate money for the removal of snow and ice from private ways thereinupon to public use? Therein open to public use, and it's yes or no.
So moved.
Well. Second.
So I'd, I'd like to refer this to the joint committee, DPDW City Council Joint Committee.
Second.
Counsel Freeman Daniels, do you have a question?
On the referral now, I'll just say, I was, I'm ready to vote on it now, but if it needs to be discussed.
It's been referred. Well, it has not been referred yet, though.
Second.
The second. All those in favor, what's that? Yeah, okay. All those in favor of referring?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It is so. This is the second reading, the authorized amendment by gift of the Jeswolds and Mr. Abrams.
Move approval. Move acceptance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Recall from last week, this is just a box of land that is necessary for the completion of the water drainage project.
This will require a roll call vote, actually all our remaining ones with a couple of referrals, the last two will require a roll call vote, so.
Counsel LaBarre?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
This is to expand the historic district to include much of Round Hill. This is second reading.
So moved.
Second.
It's made and seconded, it's on the floor. Anyone want to discuss it? Roll call, please.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Nay.
Counsel LaBarre?
Yes.
This is the parking prohibited all the times.
Can we move four, five, and six as a group? They're all related.
Four, five, and six. Motion's made for four, five, and six.
Second.
And these are all related to parking provisions or limitations on Round Hill Road. And this is second reading.
So moved.
Oh, they've been moved.
Oh, they were moved. Sorry. They moved them as a.
Short-term memory issues.
Yeah, I do.
Any further discussion besides movements? Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Just to reiterate that this, this is a narrow street, we're trying to widen, we're trying to let some, reduce some parking to widen it a little bit, allow for the delivery of construction materials, and it will be expensive to install these, no parking signs. We're hoping that we can get some, a little bit of compensation from the developer.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Yes.
Next up is also on second reading, overview of the city council and city council committees.
I move seven and to 12, seven to 12 as a group.
Second.
The motion's made for Article 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. We moved this group, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on these?
Yeah.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I think we all recall that this is the, these are all the amendments to the ordinances that will remove claims from the purview of the ordinance committee. And we had a, quite a long discussion on it last time, so I think we're.
This is on the recommendation of the city solicitor, as you recall. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Tacey?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Aye.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LaBarre?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Aye.
The next two up are ordinances for referral to ordinance. Our number 13 is to schedule off-street parking areas.
Move, move 13 and 14 to referral.
13 and 14, both. That's been seconded, that's also parking meter locations and regulations. Any discussions on the referral? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On updates, we have, Counselors, you'll be pleased to know, and I need your attention